We call to order the legislative session 2017-20 for August 15, 2017. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
(Inaudible). How can be that able? Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we is not temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen. But we live to defy the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First item on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from August 1, 2017.
Aye.
Second?
Aye.
Any corrections, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes in reference to the Personnel Manual.
Is it moved?
Second?
Second.
Any discussions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. There is one housekeeping matter this morning, and that is the open work session on the second-hand dealer law will not be held today. It will be rescheduled for a future work session. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on the Wacomiko County School Board pending nominations. The Wacomiko County School Board Nominating Commission has submitted six names for the three open seats on the Wacomiko County School Board for council's consideration. Council has conducted interviews of the six nominees, and the next step is to hold a public hearing. A public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing will be held this morning at 10:00 a.m. The six candidates are Dawn E. Becker, Alan C. Brown, Sr., Kevin S. Lindsay, Michael G. Murray, William K. Turner, and Talana D. Watson.
Thank you. This time we open the floor for public hearing on the Wacomiko County School Board pending nominations. If you have any comments, concerns you'd like to express, come to the podium, please. State your name and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on the Wacomiko County School Board pending nominations. Mrs. Hurley?
The next item for business is Resolution Number 107, 2017, concurring with and approving the fiscal year 2018 rental allowance program grant agreement with the Community Development Administration and the Department of Housing and Community Development of the state of Maryland. At the last regular council meeting, council approved the grant application. This resolution is to consider the grant agreement that indicates the award for fiscal year 2018 is $40,000. And we have Mr. Jason Sammons, Acting Assistant Director of Wacomiko County Social Services, here.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 107, 2017.
Showtime.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Sammons, if you would like to come up and review this for us.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Good, thank you. If you could state your name and your title for the public.
Sure. Jason Sammons, I'm the Acting Assistant Director for Services at the Wacomiko County Department of Social Services.
And I'm Dawn Spicer. I'm the Supervisor of In-Home Family Services at the Wacomiko County Department of Social Services.
So, the program that you're referring to today, if you could just elaborate slightly on that?
Oh, okay. If I may?
Sure.
Okay. This is a program that I spoke about earlier this month at the evening county council meeting. It's a rental assistance program that provides a temporary subsidy to families that are either homeless, facing homelessness, or are facing some kind of emergency where their housing may be affected. And this is a program that the agency has run for over 20 years, and I think it's been really helpful, as I spoke about before. The agency, through our records during FY '17, 691 homeless people came through our Emergency Services Division at the agency to apply for housing assistance. I supervise the In-Home Family Services Unit, and 30% of their referrals that came to my unit were also requesting housing or assistance with it. And also, in our numbers, 821 homeless people came through the year before. So, it's obviously a need in our community, and this program does a pretty good job of helping people anywhere from like six months to a year with paying for rent so that they can get back on their feet.
Any questions, Simone? We've already went through it once.
Yeah.
It's a good presentation.
Are they allowed so many multiple times, or is it so many times they can do this in a period of two years or three years? Or do they re-referral, I guess?
We don't really have repeats that I'm aware of, Mr. Holloway. I have not. And normally, the program, we allow folks to use it for six months, but it can be extended to 12 if necessary, but we normally don't even have to go on to that level. Because what we're looking for initially is them being able to sustain their rent, you know, do you have a job? Do you have a source of income? It's not the kind of program where we put somebody in it or allow them to use this kind of subsidy if they have no job, they have no, you know, check coming in. It wouldn't be a good use of funds. We just don't do that.
John?
No.
Okay, we're good. All those in favor of Resolution 107, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Yay.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution Number 108, 2017, authorizing Clark Mosquito Control Products, Inc. as a sole-source vendor for the purchase of three Cougar Smart Flow units and to waive the formal competitive bidding process for the purchase of said units. And we have Mr. Nick Rice here, purchasing agent.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 108, 2017.
Showtime.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Morning, Mr. Rice, where are you? There you are. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. President.
How are you?
Good.
Great. If you could both state your name and title for the public.
Nicholas Rice, Wacomiko County Purchasing Agent.
And I'm Larry Limbeck with Mosquito Control Entomologist.
You're talking about suggesting that we use a sole-source vendor?
Yes, so there are times where there's only one vendor we can purchase a good or a service from. This can range anywhere from territorial restrictions, proprietary goods, whatever it may be. This, for instance, is Clark. They are the only distributor, their manufacturer are the only distributor, so they're actually the only company we can buy this product from.
Questions from council?
It's in your statements, it says that your employees are trained on this equipment?
Yes. Yeah, they're trained on this equipment, and it's computerized. It interfaces with our GPS tracking system, so we need to be able to operate that and be efficient at it. So, it's all integrated. Any change in the system would require a lot of specialized training for the technicians that utilize it, and myself.
So, the savings, if you went to a different piece of equipment, would probably not be there due to the fact that you'd have to retrain all your employees?
It would cost, and the ones that are out there that can do what we try to do are going to be the same price, basically, with a small differential, whether it be higher or lower. But we still need to keep all our units the same, otherwise we would have employees needing to be cross-trained, and that would create confusion.
Okay. Any other questions?
I guess the concern is, anytime you waive the formal bidding process, that you can get into some gray areas. So, I guess maybe some clarification on why you think that is necessary?
Well, like I stated, there are times where we could bid this product out, but the only vendor that's going to bid is Clark. So, and that's, we get the documentation from the manufacturers, and in this case, Clark actually submitted a letter that states they don't have distribution channels, so there's no one else that sells the product that we're looking for.
Also, in the past, we have attempted to bid this out, but we have to specify the computerized portion that Clark manufactures as being attached to their sprayer unit. And when we have done that in competitive bids in the past, nobody is able to bid that computerized portion of the unit.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 108, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Limbeck.
Next is Resolution Number 109, 2017, authorizing Albin Tractor Company Incorporated as a sole-source vendor for the purchase of parts, service calls, and preventive maintenance for the caterpillar equipment, and to waive the formal competitive bidding process for the purchase of said parts, service calls, and preventive maintenance during fiscal year 2018.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 109, 2017.
Showtime.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
I'll start this off, and we've got two of these, and I understood where you were coming from on your, the prior one, is the fact you could only get, you know, those sprayers from one company. But what is the real advantage of going with sole-source on this?
Well, I have Mark Whitlock here, he can speak to the equipment itself, but in this case, there, we have caterpillar equipment, and you have to have your equipment serviced by an authorized representative for caterpillar equipment. The only local vendor that is actually an authorized service and parts dealer is Albin Tractor.
So, we don't do any of the servicing on the caterpillars at all ourselves?
No, we don't.
We don't do any?
No.
Okay. Do we get any kind of, do we have any kind of advantage by not bidding? I mean, are we guaranteed, say, a 10-over cost or a 30% discount by not bidding?
Well, what's going on here is, what is affected by this is actually a very small portion of our caterpillar equipment, pieces that we have currently. Normally, when we buy equipment, we get a five-year, 10,000-hour warranty with the equipment. That's a full driveline warranty, so anything that occurs in that time period is already covered under the warranty. The things that you may get are a pull handle, or if a hood gets cracked, or something like that, and those are proprietary to caterpillar anyway. Now, on the other side of that, the things that have not been replaced in our replacement, you know, our five-year replacement of our equipment, is there's a couple, two or three pieces of old equipment that are sitting there. And so, when we have those worked on, basically, all caterpillar engine work is proprietary anyway because of their software packages and their computerized systems that go on those machines, so you would have to come back to them anyway to get that. They've been very good as far as if we have something broken down that we need, they come and they fix it, and we're back in service and we go. And that's, and it all really ties back into buyback pricing on equipment. When you deal with a company and they've done the service work, or they've done the repair work on a piece of equipment, they know what kind of piece of equipment that is. They know what kind of life it's had, they know what kind of service record it's had, and they will give you higher buyback pricing on that equipment at the end of its life when you go to purchase another piece of equipment.
And similar to the Clark, where we had the letter from the manufacturer, we also have a letter from Caterpillar here indicating that Albin Tractor is the local authorized vendor for Wacomiko County and among a whole bunch of other counties in Delaware, Maryland, and Virginia as well.
So, what is the actual fiscal year, next, closest?
It would be Virginia. And it's, some on the eastern shore, it's Carter-Albin, or Carter-Caterpillar, but in caterpillar structure, they will not allow Carter to come into Albin's region and work on that equipment.
When you bid something like this, is it done on a cost-plus basis, or is it just done on a, well, here's your price?
And this actually kind of ties into one of the other exceptions in the purchasing manual, which is special services. And what that entails is, when you have a piece of equipment worked on, and you don't necessarily know the extent of the damage to the equipment, you have to bring it somewhere, they have to open it up, they have to tell you what is wrong. We don't bid those out for the nature of, we don't know what. So, if we were to attempt to bid something, if we could bid something like this, we would have to just bid it based on labor hours and parts markup. The problem you have with that is, where one person could be cheaper at their labor rate, they might take longer to fix the equipment. So, even if we had that ability, there's still that gray area in terms of...
I understand that process, but isn't it normal when you have, that you do have that type of process with a markup for profit?
Like I said, even for vehicles, we don't necessarily do that. You have something, you use a local or reputable source you've used in the past to bring your truck or something to get serviced, if it's a generator, if it's whatever it may be. We don't actually have a process for bidding those. That's where that falls under that special service exemption.
I understand the need to make it, I guess, more simplistic, but my concern is, would be that, if any company knows that they don't have to go through a bidding process, you immediately lose the advantage of a reduced rate.
Well, and that's why, in these circumstances, we wouldn't be coming here if it was possible to do something other than that. That's why we talked about the territorial restrictions. Even if we bid this, in order to get an authorized caterpillar dealer, we won't be able to get somebody else, like Mark said, outside of this region, because this is Albin's region.
We know that. Do the bidders know that?
Yes.
Albin, yeah, caterpillar dealers do know that.
Yeah. That's an agreement that they have with Caterpillar or whatever manufacturer or dealer that they might be dealing with.
I could see that being used for the sell, because just like school buses, they got the same thing, that certain dealers can sell us buses, but as far as servicing them, we can go anywhere and get it serviced. So, that's my problem, like he's saying, why you couldn't use the other company, even though they're Albin?
You can use another company to service caterpillar equipment. Where it starts to affect it is later in the life, when you go to get a buyback price on that piece of equipment. They don't know that that piece of equipment has been serviced every 200 or 300 hours. They don't know that, because they don't have those records, because outside sources have done that.
But even if they're an Albin dealer, shouldn't that be documented?
But that's what we're saying.
No other Albin, no other caterpillar dealer can come into this region.
That's what he's saying. It can be serviced by a garage, per se, but not an authorized caterpillar dealer. And when we're dealing with these pieces of equipment that are costing, you know, upwards of almost a million dollars and probably some over a million dollars, we're going to use an authorized dealer for caterpillar. That's where that comes in.
To say that Carter-Caterpillar in Virginia cannot come here and service our equipment. It's just disallowed by the franchise that they have with Caterpillar in their regions, and those are strict regions that Caterpillar sets.
I think what Ernie's saying is that someone outside of Caterpillar could also service it, and we maintain the proof, just like, you know, when you have some work on your car, some people keep their own personal journal to carfax. To prove that, you know, that, you know, this machinery's been serviced every six months, and we have the records to show it's been serviced every month on a buyback.
And that is true. You can do that.
Right.
Where, still, it all comes back to your buyback pricing, is they see that, and they're going to take that into account, that that piece of equipment has been done like that, but their comfort level is not as great. And on some of these pieces of equipment, you take the compactor that's up on the landfill, that's an $811,000 piece of equipment, and Albin, after five years, will come in and give us 50% of that purchase price and a buyback price back, so that that next, that next piece of equipment, in actuality, is only costing us another $400,000 because we've got that greater trade-in value.
How do we know you're getting a good deal with that 50% buyback? Because you're only dealing with one company?
No, whenever we've done, we bid this stuff out, and whenever it comes to that, so let's just say, let's just give Aljon, a compactor company, because there's very few compactor companies, anyway, let's just say Aljon. Aljon will not even come, they'll come maybe 65 to 70% of that, but they won't, generally won't go over it.
The other part is, I think we would take a risk if we use someone other than an authorized servicer for Caterpillar, if we use, because my opinion, by using an authorized service and parts dealer for Caterpillar, we're assured that who is working on our equipment knows what they're doing by Caterpillar. If we were to go use a different garage or a different service that is not authorized by Caterpillar, we would have to know, I mean, we would have to vet them ourselves and have to believe that they're capable of working on the equipment.
Have we, how many years have we done the bidding? I'm assuming it's been quite a few years. How many years have we done the bidding process, and it turns out that the same Albin Tractor has been picked, like 10 years in a row?
I've been with the county for 31 years. In that 31 years, I've never seen another company beat Caterpillar. They've always came with the best prices, the best service, the best everything that comes with it, and if you're asking me why, I don't know why, but they're always the winners of the bids. And I would say, too, that when you look at service and things like that, especially, not that it matters so much on the older pieces of equipment that are not currently under warranty, but the pieces that are under warranty, if you allow people to come in and do things that, as far as your service work, and something happens to that piece of equipment, you could have, you could have warranty questions that come back from that, because Caterpillar doesn't know if it was done correctly or if it wasn't done correctly.
If it's under warranty, you don't have to bid it.
If it's under warranty, no, the only thing that comes with warranty, or with this in this matter, with pieces of equipment that are under warranty, is the service portion of it, not the parts portion, just the service portion. I don't know, it's the first time I've really heard somebody talk about this special buyback pricing, and that's why we have to use this sole-source vendor. I know just about everybody in this room probably goes to a good authorized mechanic, a local mechanic, private mechanic, when their warranty runs out. Business persons as well, like Councilman Davis was saying, when their warranty goes up, they go to different mechanics to work on their diesel engines. I can tell you, and I'm gonna, what I'm gonna say is based on my experience alone, is I've dealt with heavy equipment, and I've dealt with trucks, and I've dealt with these things pretty much my entire adult life. If I had, today, if I had a John Deere tractor, which I do have a John Deere tractor, I don't take it to a Muncie Ferguson dealer. I take it to a John Deere dealer, because that's the guy who knows how to build the tractor, he knows how to fix the tractor, and I know I'm going to get it back in the condition that it's supposed to be.
Well, I'm not going to say what I'm thinking, because I don't want to disparage John Deere or anybody else, but I always try to find a local person that works on equipment, and I don't necessarily always go back to the dealer.
Right. Well, I mean, Albin Caterpillar is right in its authority, so to that point.
And we're just talking about bidding. What's the big problem with bidding? Does it take that much time? Does it take that much effort? I mean, if Albin wins, if Albin wins, they've been winning for 31 years, you said, so why are we trying to change this now?
Well, I would say I don't believe these have been bid in the past, at least the servicing side.
Not this portion, the equipment itself.
Not to my knowledge. But again, it goes back to, you're bidding servicing, so what are you really bidding? Are you bidding the qualifications of the company, or are you bidding on labor rates? And like I said, if you're bidding on labor rates and cost markup, you're not guaranteed that one person that's the lower in the labor rate's going to fix it the quickest. So, you could go with the lowest labor rate, but then you could end up paying more because they take longer to fix the piece of machinery. In this aspect, when you're dealing with these pieces of equipment that cost as much as they do, I would say generally, you use the authorized service and parts for your local region, and that would be Albin Tractor.
So, you say generally. Would you say that you would be better off with a, instead of a sole-source, maybe a preferred source, first choice, something of that aspect, instead of a sole-source, to give you an opportunity to do something different, and then they would know you could do something different than, when you name somebody sole-source, they know, that's it, okay? If you do preferred source, you're giving them first choice, or first chance, I guess that's a better way to put it. Would that be a better way to phrase this than saying sole-source?
Who would you use as your secondary source? That would be, see, when I look at this, I look at it as, this is who we have to use.
So, who would you use if they couldn't show up?
I would say this, sole-source vendors, from a standpoint of an operational standpoint, it allows us to work through our day-to-day operations and have the equipment that we need. Sole-source justification does not, I don't believe, and Nick, you correct me if I'm wrong, is not a direct tie to say that if we couldn't get somebody in there, if Albin Tractor could not send me somebody to fix my piece of equipment, that I could look somewhere else. It's not a lock.
That is correct. It's not a contract stating that we can only use them. It is basically allowing our Public Works Department to not seek pricing based on the needs that they have for fixing and buying parts for this equipment. It's not a sole-source, per se, it's really a single source, and sole-source, by the true meaning, is there's literally only one person that can do it. In this aspect, there are others, this would be a single source, but territorial restrictions would say they are the only authorized Caterpillar service and parts dealer in our region. And that is my reasoning for asking for the sole-source for these parts and services.
Did you say we had not been bidding this out before?
I do not believe so.
Not to his knowledge, you said. Okay, so you're kind of like putting the house back in order, and you're recognizing that the first thing that needs to be done is either put out a bidding process or put a sole?
Correct. So, everything that comes across my desk has to have some form of justification. You either have pricing, or you have reasons why you're not getting pricing.
Okay. And I thought, too, that the bidding process really also is to sort of guarantee a locked-in rate, more so than just, you know, trying to find the best competitor and the best pricing. Also, it guaranteed the county a locked-in rate, that we knew that we were dealing, you know, with this amount of funding for the period of the year. A sole-source vendor, I think, could allow a little more leeway on the part of the vendor?
When we use Albin Tractor as a service source, now, this is changing new old air filters and these types of things, those are yearly runs, those are locked-in prices for one year. That's how they do it. They give us, you know, if we're gonna, every 250 hours or 500 hours, they actually change, one's a short service, one's a long service, but those prices are built in, and they're locked in for that year period.
Okay. Okay.
So, you're saying that this has to, before it had to come across your desk, or it's had to come across your desk, so this is going to eliminate this coming across your desk, and gives Public Works the rights to just go spend this without your approval? Is that correct? Is that what this is?
No. There will be a purchase order put in place, and this documentation allowing the sole-source will be tied to that. So, when an auditor comes and looks at, and they say they pull PO XYZ, they're going to look at it and say, okay, you have a $50,000 purchase order for Caterpillar. Where's your justification? And this attached to it is the justification of why we're using, who we're using, and what we're using them for.
I always look at our purchasing department twofold, somebody to go out and get prices for things, but the other is a filter from our departments that we're not overspending, and so that's kind of why I think it ought to still go through without giving it as a sole-source.
No, it's going through. They have to have a purchase order in place for these parts and these services.
It'll be reviewed.
It will be reviewed, yes. This is the piece of paper that goes along with that, that gets attached to it. This is the piece of paper that goes along with that, that gets attached to it. Absolutely. And to that point, in, in my professional opinion, I wouldn't come before you and ask for a sole source if I didn't feel like the sole source is in the best interest of the county. In this case, there's no other authorized, I know we're going back and forth, I, I don't think we can compare a, a truck to, you know, a cat, piece of heavy-duty Caterpillar equipment where anybody with the tools can do the work. This is guaranteeing us that we know who's working on the equipment. Caterpillar is authorizing Albin tractor to work on their equipment. They're specialized in that equipment, that's what they do. So that, in my opinion, is why we're before you today asking for a sole source.
And this was, to, to add to that, I mean, this is just not a, a solid waste vendor either, this is a Rhodes vendor too. So when we get this, this is, this is, this is a county authorization to have, because Rhodes has Caterpillar graders and different things that they use, and it's the same, it's the same issue that comes up with them.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 109, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carry, resolution passes.
The next item is Resolution Number 110, 2017, authorizing J.G. Parks and Son Incorporated as a sole source vendor for the purchase of parts, service calls, and preventive maintenance on Western Star trucks and to waive the formal competitive bidding process for the purchase of said parts, service calls, and preventive maintenance during fiscal year 2018.
Entertaining motion to approve Resolution 110, 2017.
Show vote.
Second. Second, discussion.
I'm gonna go back to your statement you said just a few minutes ago. This isn't about trucks, this is different than working on trucks. Now, I do know a little bit more about this, because I did some research. Your Western Star trucks, other than maybe the hoods, the cabs, and the fenders, and whatever, are pretty much put together by different components that are used on every kind of vehicle, correct? I mean, some of them's got engine rear, some of them's got Detroit engines, some Caterpillar, some Cummins. So I guess why are we doing this the same way?
On the Western Star trucks, we don't look at the Western Star trucks, normally we do the trucks the same way we do the piece of equipment. We, we buy it, it's got a, it's got a warranty life to it. We do not send our trucks to service. We service our trucks. So the service aspect of this business is out. The, the portion that, that we're talking about here is those other components that go with it, the, the cab, the, maybe it's a speedometer gauge that's gone bad, or something's cracked, or, or something like that that has to be replaced. These is, it's sort of separate from, from Albin. Like I say, we service our own trucks, we don't, we don't send them out to be serviced.
So you would be buying parts from any, any dealer that you could buy, like Barnham Brake or any of them?
Yeah, the parts, is, if we can get a part from Napa or Holloway's or anywhere else, wherever we can get it, and I'm, I'm a big stickler about when we buy parts over there, that how we go about buying our parts is, is a three-price. I make them get three price, well, I make them get three prices on a box of bolts, so we do those things internally. So those things are, are, are set aside a little bit separate. When we get into what we're looking at here, or, or the heavy transmission or heavy engine work, that's what we're doing.
But your resolution here says is authorized as a sole source vendor for purchase of all parts, service calls, and preventive maintenance, which you say you don't do, that you don't be doing service.
No.
You're saying in your resolution it says all parts, but you're saying now that you buy parts from somewhere else.
Maybe it requires amendment.
Yeah.
Maybe not.
Yeah.
That, that's probably a, a misprint on my, on my doing.
Does it say all parts? I see of, I see of parts, the purchase of parts.
Purchase of parts, well, yeah, purchase of parts, okay. So, again, should we go back to something like a preferred source instead of a sole source for this? I mean, I understand what you're saying when you go to buy small parts, is it worth running out and getting five prices on something that's gonna cost ten dollars?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really have, if you look at the purchasing manual, there's nothing that really states what a preferred source would mean.
Okay.
That would be, I, that, that would be confusing, I think. Is it a, I mean, that's where I say I think these could be actually termed as single source, not necessarily sole source, but for the, for the reason of, we go, we just say sole source, because whether it may be territory or whatever it may be, that's, that's the, the reasoning for it.
Would it be better to ask them to come back with this revised, or to amend it now?
We can do it, we can amend it now. You're saying, how, how would you say, you said it was a misprint, what, what would you suggest?
Does it-
Should not be rough. Right now it says parts, service calls, and preventive maintenance. Because we can amend it right now if you want, it's the very, very first paragraph.
Purchase of parts, service calls, and preventive maintenance.
Drop, drop preventive maintenance. Because the parts actually said of, not all.
Yeah, but it says sole source.
But it says sole, it does. And, and, and the reality of it is, is through public works as a whole, you're, you're, you're gonna be hearing more of it. Rhodes is, they have different needs and different types of equipment, and those same things that we do operationally to, to keep operating are gonna come before this body. Anytime that we get to, you know, what we feel we could spend in a year is gonna be a, a price threshold. So you're gonna see many more of these.
Well, it sounds like it needs to be amended, but I'm not quite sure what needs to be amended.
I, you know, I'm fine, if we can amend the parts, we can amend the service calls, we can, well, we can strike service calls or service. We can strike those things.
So we, we strike service calls?
Yes.
What about preventive maintenance?
Yes.
And parts stays?
Parts stays.
Parts stays.
Yeah. And, and I only say that because there's only, that's where I can get some parts and I can't get them anywhere else. When you're looking at cab components, different, different pieces.
Yeah, so that, that would be the, that would be the idea, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, is there's certain parts that we can only get from this dealer.
Okay.
The ones that we can. I, I don't know how you would wanna word that so that it, it doesn't say all, but sole source purchase of certain parts, I mean-
It means all.
Or Western Star.
How about, how about related parts?
You wanna table?
Just table it.
Motion.
Motion, table it.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, just bring it back to us, so it's-
Come back next meeting?
Yep.
Yeah, I said clean it up a little.
Resolution 110, 2017, table it.
Good with that.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
That's being very thorough. Are you pros or the brush here?
Yes.
Have you seen, have you seen what this guy's got down here?
Unfortunately.
Have you seen that down there?
I'm, I'm counting down the days.
He's hanging sinkers on it at night.
The next resolution number is 111, 2017, authorizing the transfer of the Wycomico County 2017 housing bond allocation in the amount of three million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the use and issuing housing bonds. Each year, the county receives a request from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development to transfer its housing bond allocation to them. By doing this, the department uses the housing bond allocation to issue bonds upon housing programs or to issue mortgage credit certificates. In prior years, the annual housing bond allocation has been an extremely powerful and successful tool in creating affordable housing opportunities, and we have Mr. Jack Lennox, Director of Planning and Zoning here.
Entertaining motion to approve Resolution 111, 2017.
Show vote.
Second.
Say aye.
Discussion. Good morning, Mr. Lennox. I'd like to say we have Delegate Carla Anderson also here today. Appreciate having you here.
I saw him somewhere.
Did you see him?
No, there isn't.
Everything going well in district?
Everything's okay.
Thanks. Good morning, Jack.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. This is a annual event for the county. We receive notification from the state that we have the opportunity to transfer to them a certain amount of bonding capacity. It's all for, for good purpose, it's all for programs that are administered at the state level at no expense to the county, and we often have the standard question, what if we don't? And if we don't, the county has the opportunity, if we would like to use some of our bonding capacity, to borrow money to have programs administered locally. The state does a very good job through their various programs consolidating that effort, consolidating the borrowing capacity of local governments, and it's something that we've done pretty consistently for as many years as I can remember, and a transfer of bonding capacity that we're recommending for your approval today.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there a, a priority list already in place for people that would be able to get some of this funding?
I'm certain that that list exists at the state level. We also have locally on our housing rehabilitation programs in ongoing list. I think the priority list you referred to would be separate from that, and it would be at the state, with the state folks. And we encourage any citizens out there who are interested to contact the State of Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development to see what sort of forms of assistance might be available. And in this case, it is targeted for the single-family option, rather than the, the multifamily development.
Any other questions?
What did the, on attachment four, it talks about the program maximum acquisition costs?
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean? What does, what does numbers reflect?
I, I noticed, I noticed that as well. I would think that if we were to get into the, to the internal calculations, you would find out that it has to do with, normally with family size relative to local income and also real estate costs. It seems high.
Yeah, it said non-targeted and targeted, I wasn't really sure.
Sure. The target, it would be for neighborhoods that actually have a, a higher statistical documentation for lower income?
Are these the average house prices that would qualify? I know, I know. Where's the lawyer?
That's what it appears to be.
Yeah.
And again, even if Ms. Carter was here, those, those are not numbers that we take responsibility for. That's, that's, that's the state programs.
And we're talking about single-family, like you said, and then the household size says one or two members.
Mm-hmm.
So one person is a single family?
That's a very good question. If, if any of the council members would like, we can follow up with Ms. Shulu, who has been here before, and get any other follow-up information about the, sort of the inside of that model.
If you, if you, I mean, I think what you could do, just a clarification, you could just email us something, does that affect as far as what those, what all those represent?
Sure, we'll do our best.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't think it impacts, it's a decision today, I'm just curious.
I agree. And they are curious numbers, no doubt.
Yeah, right, yeah, very much.
Any other questions? See none. All those in favor of Resolution 111, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carry, resolution passes. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you would like to make, please come to the sto, state podium. Thank you. State your, your name and your concerns. Delegate? Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, everyone. Be real quick, I wanted to introduce Kendall to everybody. Kendall has taken over for Brittany, who took over for Bunky. Brittany's moving to New York, and so we were very lucky to have Kendall want to join us up in Annapolis and here in the district. And she's already rearranged everything. My calendar is now color-coded, so that's easy, er, easier. But, so I just, I, I wanted you especially to know, because, you know, she'll be reaching out to you all through session while we're in Annapolis, and so I don't know if you wanted to say hi to everybody?
Yeah, very nice to meet everybody, I'm excited to be working with everyone. It's been a great couple weeks so far, so-
Can't hear you.
Been a great couple weeks so far, so I'm excited to work with everybody. It'll be great to be here, I live in the area, so I'll be here in the district and then up in Annapolis.
Great, glad to have you here.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Delegate.
I am Stephanie Sessi, and I live in Salisbury, Maryland. I have a statement to read, and we have a petition that we're delivering to the council. Distinguished members of our Wycomico City Council, we are here today to represent concerned citizens of Wycomico County in regards to the historical marker commemorating Confederate General John Henry Winder, which currently resides on county property in the city of Salisbury. We have a petition here with over three hundred signatures, and it requests that the marker be quickly removed from its location. The reasons for such action being, one, General Winder was in overall command of the Confederate prisons during the American Civil War, including the infamous Andersonville, or otherwise known as Fort Camp Sumter, where over ten thousand Union prisoners of war perished because of maltreatment, disease, and neglect. General Winder's direct subordinate, Henry Wertz, was tried and executed for his crimes. General Winder escaped prosecution due to his premature death mere months before the end of the conflict. Two, General Winder has no direct connection to the location outside of the courthouse where the marker stands currently. He was born near Nanticoke, and though his family hails from the area, the man himself had little connection otherwise. Three, and most egregiously, this marker stands tall over the sites of more relevant historical incidents connected to the location where it stands now, mainly the slave pens of the former Bird Tavern, Frederick Douglass's speech given in February of eighteen eighty, and the site of the lynching of Matthew Williams by hundreds of white Salisbury residents in nineteen thirty-one. This location in the courthouse lawn was chosen for the marker and approved by former representatives of this council in nineteen eighty-three at the behest of the Sons of Confederate veterans, after it was involved in a number of motor vehicle accidents at its former location on Route thirteen. Following the, following inquiry into its status with the Maryland Historical Trust, we have learned that if it were to be moved to an alternative location, it would have to come at the request of the Wycomico City Council. Sorry, I knew I was gonna do that, county council. Either removal or relocation, the process begins and ends with this representative body. The sign is more than just a historical marker, it is a symbol of division in our community and a glaring example of the institutional white supremacy that permeates our country's history, culture, and government. And by white supremacy, I mean the social, economic, and political institutions and regulations that favor white people over non-white people, especially black people. What happens to the marker afterwards is irrelevant, but it must be removed, for we feel that it serves as an indelible stain on our community and a festering injury to our community's soul. We, the concerned citizens of Wycomico County, present this petition to you for, for your consideration, and request a decision on the status of this marker and reasoning behind said decision with all deliberate speed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Good morning, President Shawnee.
As always, I give honor to God for the opportunity to be here, our two President Cannon, members of the county council, and those assembled, good morning. My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm President of Wycomico County in ACP. I have two issues to talk about, and first, we support the, everything that the young lady just read, we're in total support of that. We agree that, we're saying that the renovation of courthouse, of the courthouse lawn gives us, the citizens and government, the opportunity to recognize the wrongs of the past, such as those that were mentioned, and also the eastern shore part of enslavery, Jim Crow and Jim Crow area. Removing the plaque would give, go a long way to promoting racial healing. Others are correct, as mentioned. I've read in the paper that some said that we can't erase history, and we agree with that. We can't erase past history, but we can recognize and accept responsibility to atone for the past and start the road to racial healing. And that is important, if you look at what happened in Charlottesville this past weekend. A few days ago, a news reporter called me to, to find out, do we think that that could happen here in Wycomico County? I reached out to about three young, active African-American leaders in the community. All three of them said, given the climate- All three of them said, given the climate throughout the country, yes, it could happen in Wycomico County. One young man said racism has remained prevalent throughout the years. Although we have made innumerable efforts toward creating change, there are still those who refuse to accept change. Those who are racist are either completely open or furtive with their beliefs. Furtive meaning underhanded. Racism is not obtained through genetics. It is taught, learned, and applied. And with everything that happened in the last few days and, and past months, the NACP says, we must help to bridge what divides Americans rather than widen the gap between us. We are, we are and will continue to be steadfast and immovable in the fight against discrimination, prejudice, and hatred. Thank you.
Thank you, President Shawnee. Any other public comments? Seen none. That concludes public comments. Council comments?
I can go first. I guess it was about two weeks ago, got an invitation to attend the send-off of Fruitland Little League, their nine-ten majors. I always talk about baseball, especially when it involves our kids. Their nine-ten majors division won the district, then they won the state championship, so they went on. Carl Anterton was there, thank you, Delegate. So they went on to represent the entire state of Maryland in the regionals. They went to Cranston, Rhode Island, so they raised a lot of money, and they went up there. So that's like a memory of a lifetime. Hopefully, those kids, they didn't do as well up there, but they got the opportunity to play games and experience that. A lot of kids want to experience that, so hopefully, these kids will be able to move up to the eleven-twelve and then keep winning the district and the region and move all the way up to the Little League All-Stars that's going on right now in Williamsport, Pennsylvania. It's like a dream of a lifetime. So these kids did a lot to represent Fruitland, Wycomico, and the state of Maryland, so I wanna recognize them for that. We had a tornado recently. Thank God, nobody was seriously injured. We were very lucky. And not long after that, we had some flooding, got a lot of calls for the flooding, and I was out meeting with constituents on the east side, and I think that flooding was everywhere. So I, I hope everybody's working their way out of that. We've got a Maryland Association Counties Conference going on, starting tomorrow, that some of us will be attending, and hopefully, I'll learn something, so thank you, everybody, for coming.
Yeah, I just wanna mention, we've got the Wycomico County Fair this weekend.
That's correct.
The ribbon cutting's Friday afternoon, and then there's gonna be a parade Saturday, and be a good time out there. Recognize the local ag community, and it's put on by the Fair Commission, and I think the chamber is behind, is helping out too, so try to get out there for that. It's all, well, it's not all free, the food you have to pay for, but getting in is free anyway, so try to get out and see that.
Joe, what time's the ribbon cutting?
I think it's at one.
One, and what about the parade?
I'm not positive.
Okay.
Any other comments? Joe? No? Good. Presidential comments, I'd like to thank Priscilla Timken and Chesapeake Tours and Promotions. We did a, a tour of the Harriet Tubman Museum in, in Dorchester County. And it was, you know, we're trying to think in a regional level here, and so it's a very interesting day. There's a great museum up there. They've received fifty-five thousand visitors since they opened in March, which is very good for, excuse me, for the regional area as a whole. So, you know, it'd be nice to see. Part of the purpose there was to show us how that had, how successful that was in light of the fact that maybe Wycomico County could have some options locally. But it's a great tour, and Ms. Timken did a very good job with, with the promotions of the event. I also like to thank the roads department with all the rain that we've had. Public Works as a whole, the great job that they've done in trying to keep up with it, because, you know, when you get that much rain all at one time, it can certainly test your systems. And I know that the response is great. We've had some issues that have come up, but I think overall, they've done a really great job in trying to address those concerns of the people who were in need. And we'll certainly, I'm assuming, have a work session in the future to see what the results were and where we're going from here. That being said, entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work sessions, followed by a convene, followed by convening as the Urban Services Commission, then close work session, which will be followed by a closed work session as Wycomico County Council.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session is the Martella Track Forward Funding. I know Mr. Bruce Ford's in the audience. How are you, Bruce? Would you like to come forward?
Yep. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Good, thank you, council members, for this opportunity to come before you. I've asked our Director of Planning and Construction, Ms. Lysel Ashby, to join us. You have before you a request for forward funding for the four hundred thousand dollars associated with the capital bond sale that will happen. We've been told by the administration sometime in mid-October to late October. That project, thanks to Ms. Ashby's leadership, will be completed and turned over to the school prior to the start of school. We're so excited for that, for that community to have this project complete, and we're ready to stand, ask, answer any questions the council may have. Anyone have questions? Do we think that we're, that we're building the right type of tracks? Someone had mentioned the, it was a few months back, as to whether or not this track is gonna be in the, I wouldn't say rushed to get it done, but in the sense of understanding, something has been requested and it's really needed. They wanted to make sure that we were getting it right the first time. May not be the appropriate venue, but I was just curious as to whether or not, if you'd had any feedback in that general.
As far as the durability of the track?
The, the type of track that it is and whether it meets long-term goals for?
Sure. It, it's an asphalt track. It's very similar to what we have at Parkside, Bennett Middle School.
Okay.
I don't think there's any long-term concerns regarding its, its ability to function as a track.
Are there any different standards based on maybe, like, state events? That there's supposed to be state track events as opposed to just local events, whether or not more is required?
I can't specifically speak to that, unfortunately. I know there are certain regulations for the type of track, lane lengths, all of that. I believe, though, this track could be a competitive track.
It's a six-lane track, it is.
It's actually an eight, it's an eight-lane.
Eight, eight-lane. So it is sweet. It, it, it really looks nice.
And the, the length of it makes a difference when you have the stated as a competition.
What they refer to as a broken-back track due to the site constraints.
I encourage you all to, to get up there and visit it.
Oh, we will.
Looks nice. Looks nice. They've done a great job, Lysel and the team's done a great job.
They're actually turning it over today, so.
Really?
So, well, the type of track related to this issue today is for the funding.
Good question.
Any questions as far as the funding?
Some we agree on.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add? Just to say thank you for, for your support for this project. We really do appreciate it. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Bruce, what is your position over there? Did they do away with the two super attendants? You're probably on the same level, but your title's different?
Right. I'm Chief Finance Operations Officer is the title that I have, so, and I am training the comptroller that we've hired to replace what position I had.
Okay.
And I'm gonna be doing two more years, and then I'm gonna be retiring. And I felt this was a great opportunity to train the comptroller.
Mentor somebody?
Come on, yes.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We get a consensus from the council moving forward?
Aye.
Good. Everybody good?
Great.
Thank you all, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the work session is the Wycomico County Draft Priority Letter. Good morning, John.
Good morning.
Good morning. Were you out and about in the flooding?
Oh, yes, yes, lots of fun this weekend, lots of fun. A marvelous day.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. The, the draft priority letter in front of you is, again, a document that will look very familiar to you. Each year, the, the state asks us to take a look back at our previous letter, and that's a good way of starting out, pointing that we do have statements of priority on record that are in place right now. But we go back and look at that on an annual basis to try to determine what our best advice is for the state in terms of what historically we've looked at as sometimes capacity expansion. If you were looking at building the bypass, for example. Or you look at the other category of system preservation, which has to do with the projects that we more regularly are familiar with and, and advise in terms of our priority. So we get to go back and take a look at that list, and this is the first year. Dallas Baker, obviously, is with us. Dallas has a really good background with, with state highway and brings that particular perspective to it, but this is not just highway projects. And in the draft that Mr. Hall has put together for you, again, based on last year's.
Keith Hall.
Keith Hall, I'm sorry.
What did you say?
Mr. Keith, Mr. Keith Hall.
Mr. Hall.
Who, who always looks to represent our constituents as best he can in those four different categories. The airport, for example, which we associate with Mr. John Hall, is one of the categories we look at. Some of the roadway improvements is another one. A category of planning studies, because this is not all just, just asphalt. It's looking ahead to try to, to look at how we might address or plan, plan well for the future or to address an existing problem. And then you have that category generally having to do with pedestrian improvements. So within that, you identify your priorities. Again, everything is not a priority. There are a lot of good projects out there. The state is looking for us to try to express to them what we feel are the areas that we should most be focused on within their general, within their general categories. And so you see in this point, at this point, projects you've seen previously, they reflect your capital improvement program, because obviously, the county gets first shot at this, and that's the discussion that you have with the executive, with the department heads when you adopt finally that, that five-year plan, and that should be, should be consistent. So we had an earlier draft, for example, that included, and I should just put it out there, there are projects out at the airport, for example, that we know are important and we would like to proceed with but need further discussion, and we're not recommending be included this year, because frankly, they have not yet been vetted. But what that allows us to do as well is to focus, for the sake of that category, with the capacity improvements out there that we know we want to do. There is agreement on it, it's in the capital improvement program, and we wanna make sure we keep front and center with the state. And so that's what's included under that, under that listing. As far as the others, sixty-foot road, an example of a change. Last time, we advocated for funding. At this point, we could take that off, but it remains, as we understand, a county priority, and this is to encourage them to act quickly, to keep that, again, front and center and to move ahead with those, with those improvements. So we still have that on the list.
It's my understanding that's been funded, but if you wanna put it on the list, does the order of numeration make any difference here as far as what's one and two? I'd like to see that moved to number one, to be honest with you. You know, sixty-foot road. We've got people, you know, it's actually, I mean, I understand the airport's important, and it's very, a very important thing for the county, but when it comes to, if it's, I mean, does this, does that make any difference?
Just to, just to clarify too, I've spoken with the state, and sixty-foot roads on the schedule to be in construction this fall, so.
I understood that.
Yeah.
But it's still not done. So I, I mean, we don't wanna take it off the list completely, but do we need to step it up to number one?
Are these in order of priority or not?
My understanding is that we're listing priority, aren't we, Dallas?
Yes, there's, I, I've seen other counties, when I was on the state side, I've seen other counties that just basically will put out the list and say the, this is what our, the projects we want addressed are. And, you know, a good example would be Ocean City with, when they put, they want ninety added more lanes, and they want the fifty, another bridge for fifty. They both put them out there, but whether or not which one of those is the priority isn't enumerated very well. They would list their number-one priority typically as the dualization of one thirteen, and then there'd be a lot of subsequent items that they want, that Worcester County wanted the state to address. So we, if we identified our, hey, this is the number-one thing we want you to do, and then follow that up maybe within each category. So what I, what I would say is that within each heading, organize it based off of priority. So under, you know, because this, this letter goes to MDOT, Maryland Department of Transportation, which includes the Aviation Administration, which would be the group to respond to the airport portion. The state highway portion would be the roads, facilities, and then so on. I would say the Maryland Aviations Administration, our request to them would be, their number-one priority would be the, what's listed under the airport. Then say, state highway, our number-one request is enumerated here being point number two within the letter itself, but the number-one priority for SHA would be sixty-foot road. So does that, did that answer your question? We could almost renumber them underneath each heading.
Yeah, should be number.
That seems to.
It should be number one under roads, maybe?
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
We could change it that way. You know, I know it's been funded and it's constructed, but, you know, things do change.
Yes.
You know, things happen, somebody needs money somewhere else or whatever, you know, so.
I, I think we'd probably get Donnie Drew out of retirement if, if they tried to drop that project.
Anyway, so I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give it any slack. I guess that's a good way to put it.
Councilman Holloway, I.
Which Holloway?
Joe Holloway. Thank you. Which Hall?
Halls and Holloways.
When, when we did this priority, the sixty-foot road was already in the works and is being actually physically done, whereas we wanted to draw the attention of the airport to the Secretary of Transportation, and this is the first time that the airport has sat at the top of the list for MDOT. So it's a, it's just a pretty dramatic statement to the state where our priorities have not changed necessarily, but where we're focusing more on the airport, whereas at least sixty-foot is in the works. These airport priorities are not in the works.
I understand what you're saying, but it's not physically in the works. The only thing's been done is there's been some paint put on the ground, which I suppose is more to it than just painting marks on the ground, but it's not being constructed yet, so.
Dallas, do you mind briefly telling us what exactly the state's gonna do with that intersection? Because that, that's a concern to a lot of people in the Pittsfield area.
Sure. So what I can tell you is it's gonna look a lot like Walston Switch looks now. There will be a signal on both sides of the road, one for east and westbound fifty, and you'll have those inside-left turns, so you aren't coming to, I'm trying to think of a good example. Say, the intersection of Tillman Road on, on fifty, where it is a direct ninety to make that left turn, and then you're crossing through two signals. It's the inside-left turn that you see.
You're actually facing cars coming at you.
Yes, sir. So it's the inside lefts, like you see, like I said, at Walston or at Hobbs, and also, I believe, Tillman. I think I said, I said Tillman, or I meant Fort Morris.
Yeah, you did say Tillman.
Yeah.
I think I knew what you were talking about.
Yeah.
Why I ask, is because a lot of people keep saying they wanna stoplight there. But I remember about fifteen years ago, Donnie Drewer said that statistically, stoplights cause more accidents.
So there's a little qualifier to that in the sense that stoplights will generally create more accidents in the terms of rear-end collisions. Okay?
More severe, is what they said.
Yeah, so exactly. One of the options proposed that didn't receive a favorable was a, was a J-turn. The J-turns would have eliminated the crossing movement.
Like they have in Hebron?
Yeah, like, like in Hebron, like on one thirteen and twelve, and in Worcester. I mean, we've got J-turns all over the place. And what that does, though, it changes the pattern, so you would see an increase in your side swipe crashes under a J-turn, but you don't see the large number of fatalities in a side swipe crash that you do in a T-bone, which would, that movement would prevent. So again, yeah, it's a stoplight, people can run it, but it's, it's something that clearly the community out there supported and wanted and was made very clear to myself and Donnie when we were at the, at the public meeting that they, they wanted the signal, so.
Well, thank you, a lot of people bring that up every time there's an accident out there.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for keeping the planning issues in focus as part of the, this document, because I think that's something the council brought before you, Jack, and I think Keith was here, I believe, at the same time.
Yes.
This is about a year ago. And I really appreciate you guys leaving that in there. Where does a planning-level feasibility study come in in the pecking order of the state of Maryland?
It's been, my experience is done simultaneously with constructions. You know, the state highway has a planning department. You know, they have, it's called RITD, Region of Intermodal Planning Department. They can work on that, these planning documents, to figure out what the long-term scope of these things are the same time that the construction guys are out building 60-foot road. They're not mutually exclusive. They've got enough, you know, enough hands out there to get the work done. So it's not like, oh, well, we're going to be working on building an intersection, and then we'll start planning. No, they've got a planning department the same way we do.
I think I said Keith, but I believe it was Weston. I believe you were here that day.
Correct.
Yeah, last year. But we appreciate you guys keeping it there.
Absolutely. They're having a lot of hands involved in this, obviously, so, and it continues to evolve.
Where's it go from here?
It comes back to you at formal, at a formal meeting for adoption by resolution, and then endorsed by the executive, forwarded on to the, our state delegation, looking for their support, and then processed through their state folks. And then once again, there will be the tour, and this year, it's beginning of October. And we'll get a chance to lobby for some of these again.
Any other questions from any of you? No?
Chairman, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing it back here with the small tweaks.
Very soon. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn as the county council so they can reconvene as the Urban Services Commission in closed work session.
So moved?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Meeting's adjourned.